Hello. Hi, guys. I'm going to make paper ones.
One page of signatures or two pages? Thirty or sixty signatures?
Oh, maybe like thirty.
Just in case.
Just in case, yeah. I don't want to be one signature short.
Debbie, my thing, somebody just said, "Thank you very much."
You're welcome.
I seen y'all.
Hi.
I seen y'all.
Oh, no, you're fine, you're fine. Okay. We're just debating what we're doing.
There's three receipts over this one. You said that's all property.
I went down grand dock, and then down to houses to the last. Houses.
So it's signed a petition for New York City Council? I'll even furnish a pen for that. Appreciate that. I can even put more by on the first house.
All right, we're good.
We're not voters in the city.
He paid an all-in save number?
No, we can't.
I don't pray it's not going to be yours.
Oh, where is that?
You have to be on the side here.
I'm signing anyway, but that would be any good.
It looks good.
Yeah, your signature would not count either. It might look nice, but... No, for everyone that's on there, they could take like ten off. So, no, don't do that.
I signed it. Did yours sign it?
I signed. Is that for Thelma?
Yes.
That's for Thelma signing on.
You know, I...
Sign it before I write it, of course.
Oh, yeah. Twenty-one days.
Thank you. Can I get you a sign for...
Bring it next.
She talked to her mother.
Yeah, I'm gonna try it.
What term is it?
Uh, this May till three years. Yeah, I don't know. I haven't heard of it.
Mine is all... I've learned only cars. No problem.
No one else is coming, yeah. I don't think so.
Could you give my memo up court?
Yeah, I gotta get that out there. I've seen it. I thought he was working that, because I thought he was gonna bring it tonight. Never said it, but...
Get into the...
Probably never said it.
See, remember I said, "Actually, they're putting money properly to us."
I don't know if it was something he ate or a flu. Yeah. That's a people's thing.
I wouldn't sign it.
This is my neighbor's, you know, with bad things to get.
I would, actually.
He opened up the mouth, which would be a little... Yeah.
Is he still? Hey, we go up there. Three, three.
Who are you gonna sign it with?
Thank you, Emily.
Yeah, someone could sign it. Someone could sign his name.
Can we do this program?
How about I send your bills?
Oh, the bill, oh.
I signed it this morning.
That's right, you did yours.
Harold did. Who else? Who's not here? Harold or Steve did it.
It was...
Yeah, good point.
I just thought of that. I didn't see you for it there.
Yeah, we can get a couple people who didn't sign it the other night to sign it.
Yeah, I'll sign it. You got a petition? It's on, yeah. I think you signed it. Didn't you sign it? Would you like to sign it? Would you like to sign it?
I think someone took a...
He signed it after.
If he wants it after the meeting.
He signed it after.
Is there anything in here she can go about?
Someone else coming?
Let's go ahead and call an order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Anything for a roll call, please?
Bader.
President.
Hicks, Frye.
Present.
Alman.
Present.
Louder.
President.
Farmer.
President. Next one is the approval of the agenda presented. Can we get a motion, please?
I would like to add something toward the end for a moment of silence for Dwayne Goss, if we could add that. And we could add it at the very beginning, whichever one.
Why don't we do it right after? Do it four A.
Do it where? What are we gonna do?
Four A, right after the agenda.
Okay.
I second your...
So you made a motion to the agenda?
I did.
Amendmented agenda?
I did, yeah.
Four A?
Yes.
And Steve?
I second it with the amendment four A. Moment of silence for Dwayne.
Thank you very much. So at this time, I'd like for the city council and all the citizens to take a moment of silence for our outstanding fire chiefs and at one turn of time even city manager, city of Bangor, and city accountless, different other items used on the city of Bangor committees.
Thank you.
Next one is approval of city council minutes for regular meeting on twelve eighteen twenty seventeen.
I make a motion that we approve on Monday, December eighteenth, two thousand seventeen, city council regular meeting minutes.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion period. The next one is approval accounts payable and payroll.
That would be me. Okay, excuse my voice. Under General Check Number Two, Page One of One, we have a total of bills one through twenty-seven for forty thousand sixty-six dollars and ninety-nine cents. Payroll for you, beginning twelve twenty-four of seventeen, for an additional seventeen thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifteen cents. Check number three five four two two, for a bond for three hundred and seventy-five dollars, and a check three five four four nine, for thirty-seven thousand five hundred for new DPW truck, for a total of ninety-five thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars and fourteen cents.
I make a second motion.
Any discussion?
I have a couple questions. Number twenty-one, state of Michigan, what is NPDES annual permit?
Sewer permit.
Excuse me?
It's a sewer permit? Oh, yeah. Is that what it is?
Okay.
And what's check number three five four twenty-two bond? That just passes through, isn't that correct?
Yeah. It's a bond money when officer takes off the street. Instead of going to jail, you post it. Goes to the court.
Okay.
What's the Bangor County Central Dispatch air card?
Those are for our computers.
Okay, for computers.
You have one of ours?
Is that something we're on paper now, or...
We hope it always had.
Okay.
Okay, the next one is General Check Account.
Whoa, 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 go back. We have a motion table.
We don't have a motion yet.
Any discussion? Any more discussion? Let's go, roll call, please.
Bader.
Yes.
Frye.
Yes.
Alman.
Yes.
Louder.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Householder.
Yes. Motion approved.
Okay, the next one is General Check Account Number Two. This would be for the retirement health insurance for thirty-three forty-eighty. Delta Donald of Michigan for five thirty-six twenty-five. Standard Insurance Company for seventy-eight dollars and forty-seven cents. Vision Service Plan for one hundred and ninety-seven sixteen, for a total of four thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents. I make a motion that we accept this amount of money.
I support that.
Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Bader.
Yes.
Frye.
Yes.
Alman.
Yes.
Louder.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Householder.
Yes. Motion approved.
And the next one is Rhodes, for a grand total of one thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty cents. I'd like to make a motion that we approve this amount.
I second that.
Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Bader.
Yes.
Frye.
Yes.
Alman.
Yes.
Louder.
No count on?
Farmer.
Yes.
Householder.
Yes. Motion approved.
And the next one is Rhodes, for a grand total of one thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty cents. I'd like to make a motion that we approve this amount.
I second that.
Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Bader.
Yes.
Frye.
Yes.
Alman.
Yes.
Louder.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Householder.
Yes. Motion approved.
Okay, from the TNA Account Number Two, one page of one, this is for the Third Bank Return Refund for Rick Gray, for seven hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty-three cents. Renata John Hernandez, refund seven ninety-nine seventy-seven. And Michael Earl Perry, a refund for thirty-nine forty-seven forty-five, for a grand total of fifty-four hundred sixty-four dollars and seventy-five cents. I know that we accept this amount of payout.
I support that.
Any discussion? What are these four of the refunds for?
They were all, and I'm pretty sure they're all, weren't they all disabled vets?
Number one and three, yes, Rick Gray, for some reason, got billed the third, through his escrow got billed, he's a one-hundred percent disabled veteran, so that was refunded back to them. Number three, also same thing, they just bought a house, there was one-hundred percent disabled veteran. And then John Hernandez, I'm not sure, that may have just been principal residence exemption, that was missed and put on. I'm not exactly sure on that one, though.
How do they get waived for like principal residence? How's that before?
Yeah, that has to be, well, sometimes what happens is they'll move in and the paperwork doesn't get completed, so they're charged that extra eighteen mils, and then when they fill the paperwork out, they go back, like the current year and three prior, and so they can get all that back.
Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Bader.
Yes.
Frye.
Yes.
Alman.
Yes.
Louder.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Householder.
Yes. Motion approved.
From TNA Number Two, this is for the payouts, the pass-through winter tax distribution, for twelve-two of seventeen to twelve twenty-nine of seventeen. ABB Joint Fire Board for nine thousand five hundred and one dollars and fifty-seven cents. Bangor Community Schools, eighty-seven thousand seven fifty-one eighty-two. City of Bangor, thirty-two thousand five sixty-four eighty-seven. Senior Services of Bangor County, twenty-one hundred sixteen dollars eighty-seven cents. Bangor County Treasure, twenty-three thousand six thirty-five ten. Bangor District Library, ninety-one seventy-five fourteen. And the Bangor Intermediate School, fifty thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirty-four cents, for a grand total of two hundred and fifteen thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-one cents. And I'd like to make a motion that we accept this amount of payout.
I support that.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Bader.
Yes.
Frye.
Yes.
Alman.
Yes.
Louder.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Householder.
Yes.
And last but not least, Rhodes. Maxon Tree Service, remove Tree on Hamilton for eight hundred dollars. Perceptive Services and Operations, January thirteen thirty-nine sixteen. Root Springs Scraper Company, scraper blade, nine hundred and eight dollars. State of Michigan, Mbat, state infrastructure bank loan, eleven seventy-three sixty-nine, for a grand total of four thousand two hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-five cents.
Thank you. Next one is approval of city council minutes for regular meeting on 12/18/2017.
I make a motion that we approve on Monday, December 18, 2017, city council regular meeting minutes.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. The next one is approval accounts payable and payroll.
That would be me. Okay, excuse my voice. Under General Check Number Two, Page One of One, we have a total of bills one through twenty-seven for forty thousand sixty-six dollars and ninety-nine cents. Payroll for you, beginning twelve twenty-four of seventeen for an additional seventeen thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifteen cents. Check number three five four two two, for a bond for three hundred and seventy-five dollars and a check three five four four nine for thirty-seven thousand five hundred for new DPW truck, for a total of ninety-five thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars and fourteen cents.
I make a second to that motion.
Any discussion?
I have a couple of questions. Number twenty-one, state of Michigan, what is NPDES annual permit?
Sewer permit.
Excuse me?
It's a sewer permit. Oh, yeah. Is that what it is?
Okay.
And what's, what's check number three five four twenty-two bond? That just passes through, isn't that correct?
Yeah, it's a bond money when officer takes off the street instead of going to jail, he posts it, goes to the court.
Okay.
What's the Van Buren County Central Dispatch air card?
Those are for our computers.
Okay, for computers.
You have one of ours.
Is that something we're on paper now or?
We hope it always had.
Okay.
Okay, the next one is General Check Account.
Whoa, 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 go back. We have a motion table.
We don't have a motion yet.
Any discussion, any more discussion? Let's go, roll call, please.
Bader.
Yes.
Frye.
Yes.
Alman.
Yes.
Louder.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Householder.
Yes. Motion approved.
Okay, the next one is General Check Account Number Two. This would be for the retirement health insurance for thirty-three forty-eighty, Delta Donald of Michigan for five thirty-six twenty-five, Standard Insurance Company for seventy-eight dollars and forty-seven cents, Vision Service Plan for one hundred and ninety-seven sixteen, for a total of four thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents. I make a motion that we accept this amount of money.
I support that.
Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Bader.
Yes.
Frye.
Yes.
Alman.
Yes.
Louder.
No count on.
Farmer.
Yes.
Householder.
Yes. Motion approved.
And the next one is Rhodes for a grand total of one thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty cents. I'd like to make a motion that we approve this amount.
I second that.
Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Bader.
Yes.
Frye.
Yes.
Alman.
Yes.
Louder.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Householder.
Yes.
Okay, from the TNA Account Number Two, one page of one, this is for the third bank return refund for Rick Gray for seven hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty-three cents. Renee John Hernandez refund seven ninety-nine seventy-seven and Michael Earl Perry refund for thirty-nine forty-seven forty-five for a grand total of fifty-four hundred sixty-four dollars and seventy-five cents. I know that we accept this amount of payout.
I support that.
Any discussion? What are these four of the refunds for?
They were all, and I'm pretty sure they're all, weren't they all disabled vets?
Number one and three, yes, Rick Gray, for some reason got billed the third through his escrow got billed, he's a one-hundred percent disabled veteran, so that was refunded back to them. Number three, also same thing, they just bought a house, there was one-hundred percent disabled veteran, and then John Hernandez, I'm not sure, that may have just been principal residence exemption that was missed and put on. I'm not exactly sure on that one though.
How do they get waived for like principal residence?
Yeah, that has to be, well, sometimes what happens is they'll move in and the paperwork doesn't get completed, so they're charged that extra eighteen mils and then when they fill the paperwork out, they go back, give it the current year and three prior, and so they can get all that.
Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Bader.
Yes.
Frye.
Yes.
Alman.
Yes.
Louder.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Householder.
Yes. Motion approved.
From TNA Number Two, this is for the payouts, the pass-through winter tax distribution for twelve-two of seventeen to twelve twenty-nine of seventeen, AVB Joint Fire Board for nine thousand five hundred and one dollars and fifty-seven cents, Van Buren Public Schools eighty-seven thousand seven fifty-one eighty-two, City of Bangor thirty-two thousand five sixty-four eighty-seven, Senior Services of Van Buren County twenty-one hundred sixteen dollars eighty-seven cents, Van Buren County Treasurer twenty-three thousand six thirty-five ten, Van Buren District Library ninety-one seventy-five fourteen, and the Van Buren Intermediate School fifty thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirty-four cents for a grand total of two hundred and fifteen thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-one cents. And I agree that we accept this amount of payout.
I support that.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Bader.
Yes.
Frye.
Yes.
Alman.
Yes.
Louder.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Householder.
Yes.
And last but not least, Rhodes, Maxon Tree Service for New Tree on Hamilton for eight hundred dollars, Perceptive Services and Operations, January thirteen thirty-nine sixteen, Root Springs Scraper Company, Scraper Blade nine hundred and eight dollars, State of Michigan M-Bat, State Infrastructure Bank Loan eleven seventy-three sixty-nine for a grand total of four thousand two hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-five cents. I know that we accept this amount of payout.
I support that.
Any discussion? Are we looking for funds for a tree removal, maybe a hundred dollars for anything?
That was, yeah, that was a dibble tree and it was leaning right towards their house, so that had fallen, and we were notified, so if that tree had fallen on their house, we probably would have been, why ever wouldn't we have?
So when I said deliver two?
This was not the one, no, that was across, because the one across the street fell into it. Yes, if they, if they notified you, then yes, you would be responsible.
They didn't reply us.
They did, oh, they did more than once.
Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Bader.
Yes.
Frye.
Yes.
Alman.
Yes.
Louder.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Householder.
Yes. Motion approved. Number seven, other regular business or exclusions, part of nation reports, presentations, need all the ordinance books, subdates, if you have any mine with me.
Well, I'll just put it on there next time, too. We got limbs, so I should have put a gold star on cover of those.
Yes, thank you.
You're ahead on gold stars?
Yeah. I mean, we can.
What are we working at? Members, everybody including myself, they're both saying, you know. At this point, we'd like to give the opportunity to public comments, state your name, three minutes.
I could make a gold star to this account.
Any more public comments? Okay, moving down the list, we have some unfinished business. We have a cemetery fee schedule update.
Do you want me to comment on it?
Go ahead.
We were looking over our cemetery fee schedule and realized that we had made a couple of mistakes, so this is the new fees schedule for you corrected, and it should be the last one that we bring before year two. If you don't say yes, please accept it, so.
So, did we do some comparisons to other cemeteries around the area?
Absolutely, yep, sure did.
You know, sometimes I have a question with the residuals and non-residentials. I'd like to see if we could do something for certain people who might have lived here fifty, sixty, seventy years and all of a sudden had moved away the last year or two with their kids, or somebody helped take care of them, or go to Arizona.
We've talked about, we've talked about that at the cemetery committee, and we feel like if they've lived here the majority of their life and like, let's say they had to go on assisted living or something, we're still going to consider them residents, so.
Okay, good.
I mean, unless you've been gone for fifteen years, then we're not going to consider you resident, but if you, you know, had to move to California to be with your kids because you couldn't take care of yourself, or like I said, you had to go on assisted living and you weren't in the city limits, we've already discussed that at our cemetery committee meeting, and we're going to allow those people to be considered residents.
For those that went away for different climates. They've lived here all their life, but they, I mean, they're snowbirds or summer birds.
Well, I mean, I mean, if they're snowbirds, they're only gone for six months, they're here the other six months, so that's, that's not a problem.
You know, I would like to, if we could put an asterisk or something on here for something like that, from the same point, you know, our days are always numbered.
Well, I think the cemetery committee decided to, like, a lot of other things we do for the city, look at it on a case-by-case basis, you know, so that we're not just putting some blanket thing out there. Like I said, if somebody's a snowbird and they're going to Florida for six months, they're still permanent resident, is still Bangor, so, I mean, we're going to be reasonable, but we're not going to let somebody who's moved away fifteen years ago say, well, I was a resident fifteen years ago, that's not going to fly, but, you know, if it's reasonable.
Somebody that moved here six months ago and they say, I'm a resident now.
Well, if they, if they live in the city and they've lived here, we didn't put any stipulations on how long you had to live here, you know, just that you had to be a resident of the city.
First, my biggest concern is somebody that lived here twenty or thirty or forty or fifty years, they, they should definitely be guaranteed a resident's price.
We're going to definitely take care of that, and that is in the minutes of our, of our cemetery committee, so it is stated in the minutes of our cemetery committee that that's our intention.
We've had people buy plots already, you know, they buy them and they have them, so they buy them when they're resident, if they're somewhere else, when they pass away, they, they.
Well, do we need a, do we need an asterisk for reference to the cemetery committee? Because right now, if I go by black and white, this is what you go by, no matter how, what you're saying, what you do, this is the guideline.
We could add an asterisk in there, you know, I mean, if you want us to put, add an asterisk in there and say, these will be on a case-by-case basis, because that's how we decided to do it. I mean, if you feel more comfortable doing that, then, you know, let's just add an asterisk on and that's fine.
I just want to be fair to the people who pay taxes all their lives in this town and the, you know, residents of the city, that we do take care of them.
Believe me, the cemetery committee is trying to do that as well, so, okay, so do you want an asterisk?
I prefer.
And it just says on a case-by-case base, you know?
Yeah, I really think we should document something on it, so it's reviewed, so it's not just somebody else is in this office and all of a sudden saying, hey, this is a piece of paper, this is what I go by, and it should be some other comment, it's going to be.
I see what you're asking.
Yeah.
Sterling, how do you look at it?
Okay, that's fine. I think something with the word may, I think that will, you know, maybe looked at on a case-by-case basis, I think that.
May be considered for a case-by-case, but.
Something of that nature.
Well, so please, okay.
Okay, so what I've added on the asterisk is resident status may be, I can't read my own writing, considered on a case-by-case basis. Will that work for you?
I think if you have the length of time that's, you know, if you were a resident for X amount of years, you're a clarify close to ten plus, I think if you, if you think that, that may.
Okay.
So what should that time limit be? Thirty, forty, fifty? Twenty-five?
If you've lived here fifty years and been by a cemetery block, you're taking a chance.
Well, I think definitely twenty years, you know, so would you sell them on twenty?
Okay.
Twenty's good.
I've been back here six years.
You paid taxes for twenty years, you deserve some.
Exactly.
Some kind of reward, other than just seven, is that what you're saying? I know. Okay, so resident status may be considered on a case-by-case basis if you were resident for twenty-plus years. Yeah, good.
Yep, so now are you making a motion to?
I'm making a motion that we accept the fee schedule as it is with the asterisk at the bottom.
Second.
Do we do a roll call on this or? Let's go and do a roll call, since it doesn't involve money.
Okay, so who would we give the second to, you or Geno? Geno. Okay. Bader.
Yes.
Frye.
Yes.
Alman.
Yes.
Louder.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Householder.
Yes. Motion approved. The next ones are tap fees, certification, labor, and materials.
I did put on the, this will be the back of the sheet, but anyway, it's the second page.
Yeah.
It's bolded, all engineering labor and materials are the responsibility of the owner applicant. And I'll leave it bolded like that.
That's what we were missing last time.
All right, nobody wants any other changes, I think it's good, your motion to accept the new water sewer and water, and we're sanitary sewer connection permit application?
I make a motion that we approve the new water sewer and connection permit application with the new fees of, as shown, you know, one thousand for resident, two thousand for commercial industrial. Same goes to with the sewer, one thousand residential, two thousand for commercial industrial.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? The only concern I might have too, if you want to build a one-hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred-thousand-dollar home in town, I'd be happy for you to come, wouldn't we, being our, we as a system, say, yeah, we'll wait for you for two-hundred-thousand-dollar home? And if you build a brand, you're like, well, South Haven's home, it's hard to get a new home in South Haven for two-hundred-thousand dollars.
I know, but still.
We're not South Haven, we don't have Big Grappling next door. All right, there's a motion on the table. Maybe we have a roll call, please.
Bader.
Yes.
Frye.
Yes.
Alman.
Yes.
Louder.
Yes.
Farmer.
Yes.
Householder.
Yes. Next one, there's a new body cam policy. Also, there's a requirement by the state, have we updated this or had one? For the new body worn, has our attorney renewed this policy? And are we applying to all the local and state laws?
Absolutely.
We have a night body cam on us too, so we're good. That Motorola, the batteries was dying after about six hours, which, you know, these body cams are pretty high-tech, but I threw a fit Motorola and they sent us the ones for free, so we got some extra body cam with batteries coming.
Okay, so you had a motion to approve this?
I make a motion that we approve the Van Buren Police Department Body Worn Cameras Policy commencing effective January fourth, two thousand and eighteen.
I support.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. New business, we have, we no longer have an occupancy inspection person, we can do that. We discussed a few times, one phone call by the fire department, my recommendation is to kick it over to our police department, who has the teeth and authority to actually go with our ordinances, and, and can do that.
Yeah, ultimately, our police department's responsible for that, no matter who's doing the inspection.
I'm also the zoning administrator too, so it's all in my hands.
Yep, so it only seems right that we just keep it in-house to our, our police chief and our police department.
Tommy's done several of these, and it's really convenient because he's here. We get a request for one and we just let him know and it gets done right away.
Yeah.
It's been working out real well.
So we going to motion for that, or do we need to do?
I make the motion that we give the police department the occupancy inspections, heads from today forward, along with the enforcement.
Very exciting.
I support.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Danny, you doing okay, buddy?
I started with my voice, go ahead today.
All right.
Freddy's sick.
Well, we got this internet banking, banking administrator, Sturgis, the manager, so what are we looking for here?
Well, Sturgis just wanted the minutes to show that the internet banking administrator would be the manager. We ran into an issue with the internet banking administrator being the treasurer, and then the treasurer left, and so then Stephanie had a problem being, and that has to do with our payroll, too. So there were, we ran into some problems with the last time around, so they would just like the minutes to reflect that you voted for the manager to be the internet banking administrator, and I'll be.
You want to make a motion?
So moved.
There you go.
Second.
Can we at least make a statement on that motion?
Yeah, I can make, I can make a statement on that, that we would, that we would like our city manager to be the internet banking administrator for the city of Bangor.
And I reset my motion, I mean, I will, I reset my second, second.
Okay, so you second the amended, what is it?
The amended motion.
Any more discussion on that?
Do you want our city manager, or do you want our treasurer?
Well, Sturgis would like for the city manager to be named as the internet banking administrator, that way I have the authority to say that, you know, when Stephanie came in, I could say, yes, it was okay, there was really no one here to say it was okay because it was a treasurer that she left.
So Stephanie's going to be using it, but the alternative, and usage will have to be approved by the city manager.
Yeah, yeah.
Different access, or low access, high access, whatever access, or no access, right?
It's kind of that way anyway, I think. Yeah, let's, just do it.
Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. We should do a roll call on that, please. Okay, at this point, we got another opportunity for public comments, state your name, three minutes. No public comments, and we'll keep on moving down. Also, everybody received the, a letter from the Late Protection Landlord Notice.
And this has been sent out to all the houses that we're aware of are owned by someone other than the people living in them, so that they're aware of the coverage, and then if for some reason the tenant is going to opt out of that, we are going to let the landlord know.
And basically, again, new copies, since we are doing our occupancy inspections, and Tommy can hand this over to him too, we got a new person or something, make sure the landlord knows, so he's covered or verified, they know what's going on, so if they do a bill, because somebody doesn't, they decline it, and we got an issue. Okay, we really have any motion up for that? Also in your package, you guys got a letter from, from vandalism, apology letter. So any questions or comments?
That was very nice, the person did write this one.
So I take this as a younger person?
Well, that was one of the young artists.
Line part.
Not the elder gentleman.
No.
Don't be expecting the apology letter anytime soon.
What about community service?
I'm not sure if the court ordered with them on that.
We did ask for it, so, you know, and this letter is just, you know, it moves slow, I'm surprised that it got into the apology letter stage, so we'll see.
Well, I would understand, like I said, a very younger gentleman making a mistake or something like it, but the second time, the more elder gentleman, I wouldn't really expect that for vandalism. You have any questions, comments on that? Also, I think in your package, you guys got a policy too from golf carts in Hartford.
Yeah, I, I like that Hartford golf cart policy, and since it's been brought up at three previous council meetings, we need to act on getting a golf cart policy. The only, you know, the Hartford one, if we're willing with that, we just have to change the name from Hartford to Bangor, and Red Earl to M forty-three, and other than that, I think the rest of the policy is, is real good.
Yeah, and Yemi did say they have not had any issues, we've had no issues with it.
Do we want to make just one statement or one change in it to allow them maybe use their golf cart during, like, when we have our apple fest or something, where they do drive it in M forty-three?
Yeah, exactly. It's closed off, yeah.
Well, and I would like to see something added, because I know that you can get insurance on your golf cart either separately or through your homeowners, so that there's some type of liability insurance along with the golf cart, so. I mean, not that you probably could do a whole lot with your golf cart, but if you hit a child or something, so.
Yeah, someone told me today that they buy one if we got, I don't know, evidence, oh, no, yeah, I think go out and get one, so.
So, so I think what we have are some recommendations, so maybe Regina could go back, redraft it, that she can repropose it back to us. Take care of that.
Do a little bit of referral for her.
Then what we can do, bring it back to the city council, then we can, we can get a motion.
Well, these are.
But I think, you know, the first reading can be at the, at next meeting, and then can really have that published, so that can be done at that time.
Okay.
Is that thinking this is going to be taken, your golf cart out today? Maybe Thursday.
The next one is a DDA appointment. At this time, we do have an opening for an enlarged person, and at this point, it's Mary like to appoint Dan Farmer to the DDA, like a motion.
Make a motion to appoint Dan Farmer to the DDA by advisement of the mayor. For the term of one one.
Sixteen.
Sixteen to twelve thirty-one of nineteen.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to recuse myself.
All opposed? Motion carried. Then also, what we have here is also, we have changes in the state law. The MIP, which is what the Michigan.
Minor possession.
So, basically, this is just how people wear the state law changes.
Yeah, I put that in there for you, and Tommy, do you want to kind of explain what?
Yeah, unfortunately, we can't, it's going to, this isn't going to be a crime anymore, it's going to be a civil infraction, so it's going to be a lot harder for us to enforce that law. And I was preparing Regina and the council members, because there may come a time where you get somebody, like, say seventeen to twenty, that's drunk, you know, obliterated, and that person might not be law, well, he can't be lodging his first offense. So, you might get somebody coming to a council meeting, calling, saying, "Oh, why didn't you guys do anything?" Well, the state law prevents us from basically lodging and taking action out now.
Just to echo, just as Tommy mentioned, just the first offense, the second one, you know, second or third, it's still a misdemeanor.
Yes, misdemeanor. So, basically, you see somebody who's renting a ticket as a misdemeanor, right?
No, 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 first infraction is a.
The first one you can't.
Civil infraction may not exceed a thousand dollars.
A hundred dollars.
Hundred.
Hundred dollars, yeah.
That's the first one, you know, if you're a offender, second time, it's going to become a misdemeanor.
And they have every right to refuse a PVT or anything, it definitely protects them a lot that refusing stuff. So, it's going to be more difficult for us.
So, can they refuse it the second time, or just the first?
Yeah, they can refuse it anytime.
They can refuse it for all, I mean, if they had ten offenses, they could.
Yeah, you can refuse it. Unfortunately, they say they get a court order for that, but like, the courts have already cautioned us, they really don't want to deal with a court order for a PVT or a breath test for the minor. So, it's pretty much try to talk them into going home tonight.
How you do that, but the fractions will be posted on driving record?
It's always been that way. It's like a marijuana offense or drunk driving, any kind of alcohol offense, it immediately goes on the driving record. But I got to caution you, there's not going to be a lot of enforcement anymore. The state of Michigan is taking the teeth out of this law, pretty much have protected the people now from underage drinking.
Well, the insurance company could nail them, right?
Yeah.
Even on the first offense.
Right. Any more questions, comments on this, changes in the state law for minor possession?
What'd you say?
Right, no more questions? At this point, let's go ahead and get a city council member comments, Danny?
I'm going to say okay.
Earl?
Yeah, I think that it was really good that the DPW plowed our straits during the holidays. I want them to know that, at least I appreciate that. The other thing, I'd kind of like to get an update sometime on the status of where we're at selling land in Joshua Park, and particularly the DDA building, I'd like to know, you know, is that where we're at in that process? I keep hearing that you're negotiating.
Right, right, still waiting for the attorney for the, for the DDA property, but as far as the EDC, I'm sure you should have gotten the.
We didn't get a number yet, I don't think, did we?
But you should have gotten the, from the state. The filed, you know, the. Corporation.
From the state?
Yes.
No, but I don't know if it's because of the holidays, but no, we haven't received.
Because they're going to send it directly here in Seattle, but as far as, as far as what the, what the attorney for the DDA, the other. First, there's a attorney to get back to us.
Okay, because I got an email from the Realtor, and he didn't know what was going on, so we're waiting you at the other side.
Yes, it's the other side, yes, yeah.
Okay.
So, would you please follow up with that?
Of course, yes. Yeah, I have another attorney in front of Jennifer, so she's, she's on it as well, so yes, absolutely.
Other than that, everybody enjoy the next couple of days, because the winter's coming back this winter.
Anything else we can do?
I'm done now.
Mr. Robert?
Just good job DPW's doing on the roads.
I was, I was really impressed, and I'm glad that Duane's family put in his obituary, like, the things that he had done for the city of Bangor, because I had no idea the amount of things, you know, that he was the building and the electrical inspector, the city man, I knew he was the city manager, member of the school board, city planning commission, downtown development authority, EDC, county planning, thirty-five years on the fire department, twelve years of those as chief, and I just thought that was very nice for us to know all those things that he has done, because I know that we've talked about things that other members of our community, along with Lou's husband, Claude, have done for our community, which is really wonderful. And I do, too, want to commend the, the snow plowing on Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve. We were at a New Year's Eve party in Hartford, and one of my friends is on the council there, and he was grumbling and complaining because they did not plow their streets on Christmas Eve or Christmas Day, or New Year's Eve or New Year's Day, and he, I said, "Well, Bangor, we did." So, 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 thank you, thank you, thank you, it was wonderful to have them plowed.
Thank you, Lynn.
It's good to see everybody again after the holidays. Welcome, Mr. Farmer, and.
Welcome, Mr. Farmer, DDA.
Thank you.
I didn't remember, new team, we're meeting Wednesday, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
We have a DDA meeting here at seven o'clock on Wednesday. Look like everybody thinks everybody's effort for the great year we had last year, unless you push it forward this year, keep doing what we're doing, we've had a lot of great comments about the city. We are moving in our own direction, we're showing improvements. A lot of positive about our growing facilities coming out there in the EDC area, and also dispensaries coming into town. And also, we keep working on it, we got a good looking parking lot back there by the DDA. If we can do something between those two parking lots. Been a few comments about why didn't we do it? Part of that is, we can't do it because we don't own them. So, you know, there's a lot of comments, why didn't we do them? We can only do our own property, we can't do somebody else's property. So, let's just make that sure, and let everybody know that. Also, like, just for a follow-up, too, Regina, if you can, any updates on the railroad? I know during the holidays, we had the bars coming down, blocking traffic.
They were down today.
And again today.
Yeah, it's cold. It's the cold weather, that's all they've said, it's cold weather. I don't know if there's a fix, you know, but it's kind of annoying.
The only thing was, too, we presented that to them when we made a deal with them for them for safety to put those bars in, and they pretty much told us, "We don't have that much of a problem anymore." And I believe that's a lot bigger problem than what we've just seen, cold weather or not, a major issue.
Oh, I know.
Another, then the other comments, too, is the feedback from our company about how damaging those tracks are on M forty-three.
They fixed them.
They just fixed them.
They did fix, yeah, they fixed them.
He did fix it last week.
It was like Thursday or Friday.
Yeah.
Now, what they did, is that temporarily, they keep going by, or is that going to?
It's got a new piece of cement in it.
They did in this cold weather?
Yep.
There's, there's plates that said that.
Yeah, you're full of a little slab on the track.
Oh, they did that. Well, excellent.
But there are people driving around them.
Yeah, right, I used to. Kind of like driving around.
Arrows are down. Arms are coming out, people are driving around them, that's.
Yeah, and I know the police have been setting up and blocking it, and we do try to do that. It's a very difficult monitor, I know, we do try to shut that down and get feedback, and it's.
Well, today it was bad, because there were several semis lined up on the east side of the tracks, and, you know, the cars were able to turn around and go around, but the semis were not able to do that.
So, we can kind of talk to them a little bit more, we need something more robust, because it is a burden to actually the people of this town that they'll have to deal with, and back up the traffic and everything else. So, based on that, like, a motion, maybe.
So, who?
The second.
Support.
All in favor? All opposed?
I will publish CSX's plate number again. People can follow them on the.
Yeah.
You're beating up trucks, why don't I? Is that someone? Are you here, out here? Council, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Want to sign it before you go to the paper, me?
Where Luke goes. You guys, can we get a signature sheet or a red? Can we have a couple people here sign it?
Yeah.
Okay, don't run away, we need your signature. We need mine.
It's not for payroll, is it?
No. We've got that taken care of.
Yeah, we're kind of.
I did suggest that, I said, "Will you call me and see?" I thought about when you contacted first time.
Just look around here.
No, we weren't, we got a whole line in. We were thinking of sending her back. Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. Because I see, oh, this house. Everybody just told that, so.
Or is your permission?
So, I was going to call me back. This is.